All right, since we have all the applicants here, two clicks before six, let's call this meeting and set up a planning board to order. I do not have any opening statements, except try to stay warm out there. We do have a forum. First order of business is for us to take a look at the minutes of the last planning board dated 24 October, so if you could grab those, please. You want to read along?
Thanks for the mention, share.
So, you should have reviewed those already. Does anybody have any exceptions, additions, comments? If not, can I get a motion to approve the minutes that I submitted?
Motion motion?
Second. All in favor? Thank you very much. So, the first order of business is a review, well, to re- review or take another look at it, take a look at it after we looked at it originally, the Deer Run subdivision. And who's here for that?
Rick Jones.
You gentlemen? Okay. Are there any butters here? No, okay, great. All right, just a review for the members. We had a significant review of the Jones Associates Deer Run subdivision. If you recall, the last meeting, we elected not to do a site walk. There was a waiver requested for stormwater management, and there was some discussion around that. But then we directed the CEO to prepare the findings of fact, prepare the findings of fact, and then we would review those today. The applicant does have standing from our last meeting, so we're good with that. So, I think we can move right on to a review of the findings of fact. If that's, if anybody has any comments? All right, so let's do that. Page one. No comments, no issues. No comments, no issues. Page three. Of course, this is the first time we see the stormwater standard. Now, the applicant has requested a waiver.
And so, can somebody remind us why that is being requested?
Because there's no construction of a road, and they've submitted a very extensive erosion and sedimentation control plan.
So, could we have that very statement in the findings of fact?
I think if you grant the, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, great. There was some discussions where at this point, there was some discussions, I recall, on our last meeting, that the driveways that were to be constructed were to, some of them were going to have culverts.
Correct.
And we have that later in the findings.
Does someone want to make a motion regarding the stormwater waiver?
To approve?
Yeah.
I'll second. All in favor? And we'll add the comments that Lori had suggested. Okay, great. All right, then, on to page four. In section B, standard two, I guess that refers back to the other one over there. Right, so that has been met for the same reason. Page five. Comments?
In the standard, item number seven, that's where I referenced the conditions of approval regarding the construction of the building.
And the culverts, right. And, of course, there'll be some validation of that by the CEO at the time those constructions, those culverts get placed.
The CEO and the road foreman.
Yep. Oh, yeah, I guess it is. All right, page six. And page eight. And please take note of the conditions of approval on page eight to make sure those that we required be written in here are located. So, the culverts are here, driveway permits.
Could we be reminded of what the notes on the plan say? There was some discussion at last meeting.
Yes.
Some additional language to be added to the notes regarding either wetlands or other, the road area.
Road flooding.
It was the road, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
And that is note sixteen on the plan. We originally had it down in the, on the planet, on the map itself. It's now on the map, but it's also as a note, too.
And the language for that note reads?
The Changel Hill Road, the town road is prone to natural seasonal flooding at the intersection with Main Route 26.
If there are no more comments, concerns, or additions, deletions on the findings of fact, can I get a motion to approve the findings of fact?
Can I make a motion?
All in favor? Fine. And now, we need to also have a motion to approve the applicant subdivision plan.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, I'll second. All in favor? All right. Very good.
You can bring that pen back.
When did we sign that?
We will need the registry.
So, the way down.
We should just lay it out.
I'm going to sign it.
Okay, please sign it.
It's a standard thing. Registry will take care of it.
Sure, people can come over here and sign it.
Do you want us to come to the front?
Yeah, if that would be all right.
Yeah.
You want the date of this pen, too, Sarah? And do you prefer what kind of date?
You do whatever makes you happy.
You know where it's going to look like.
Yes, I do.
Here.
So, what's the, and I have to go?
Come on, Sherry.
Oh, you have two, is there?
Yes.
I'm going to move that way, Neil, get out of your way.
Goodness, thank you.
Now, it's official.
They've got some cleaners out tonight.
Just three, just.
Everyone, did you get it?
I got both of them. Okay, we're good?
We have the same number of signatures on both the registry and the head.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, then, moving on to the next order of business. We have a subdivision application for East Bethel Woods. Gary, you're here to represent them.
I am.
Yeah, okay, fine, thank you. Before we ask Gary to tell us what he's going to do, can we find that the applicant has standing? You'll notice in your package, we've got a warranty joint MCD here.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Lori. Second, you may. Thank you. All in favor? Okay, great. Are there any butters for this here today? Seems great. All right, Gary, it's pretty straightforward, but why don't you just give us an overview? What you're doing here?
The Champlains, Richard and Linda bought a portion of land from Andre Burney, and it was within the last five years, and they decided they want to divide the lot that they have into two pieces. So, that throws it in subdivision, so we divided the lot. Each lot will access East Bethel Road on its own. We don't ask for road building. We do have MDOT permit for the entrance for the lot that's not developed already. None of the lots has a house on it already, so.
So, speak to that a little bit. We've identified them as lot one, which is the larger of the two lots.
Yes.
Is that the one that has a building on it?
Yes, it does.
And that has an access point already on it to that building, driveway already. So, just lot two here, it's indicated by those two, and that's where your proposed, okay, great, thank you very much. Okay, and again, to reiterate, no infrastructure, no additional construction, roads, none of that, just simply breaking the law.
Yes.
Okay, great. Any board members have any questions?
What is this little?
That's an existing piece of property.
There's a existing lot with a mobile home on it.
There'd be nothing on that lot.
I was actually, I was actually in a house.
The rectangular dome.
Oh, okay.
No, I think she has a well off.
But it's some, the point is, it's somebody else owns that piece of property.
That's correct.
Right. And so, it's not part of the split up of the major lot.
And it was not a subdivision decision?
No.
Okay. Just odd.
It is odd. Yeah, I asked that question myself, was looking what it looked like. Okay, good question.
And do we have any thing about, like, you know, capability of supporting water and stuff on the floor? What do we have in mind?
Yeah, we do. We have Aquapropath, and we also have a soil scientist.
Subsurface wastewater design, we have.
Do you have an application of that? Do you have a pending application for that?
Yes.
Do we normally see that as part of a subdivision?
Normally, the soils, if it's a full-blown subdivision, the soils report is typically included in the application on these little lot splits, typically not. You can see the test pits located on the plan itself, and I-
As one.
Test pit, I see.
There were two, but that's the one they plan to use.
Okay.
And I did provide Sarah with copies of both of those.
And I do reference them and the license number of the soil scientist in the finding of fact?
Before we move on to the findings of fact, is there any other comments, concerns, questions for the applicant? Okay, can we do that then, please? Move on to the findings of fact, review those. So, again, we start with page one.
So, if under two, there was testing done, how come we don't reference that?
There was no testing done. Typically, there, I've never seen water testing.
I mean, you know.
Soil?
Soil.
Soil tests?
That's under, that's-
Okay, later on.
Yes, that's later on.
Okay.
That would be under number six, Lori, sewage disposal?
I thought for some reason, regardless of water, we use that document.
So, did you hear her talk about the sewage disposal on there, Sarah? She references that.
Yes, 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 thank you.
All right, so can we move on to them, page two, please? And page eight.
So, are you showing that driveway entrance as a representation, or are you?
Well, the actual-
What is it?
Entrance is governed by the MDOT permit.
Okay.
So, at the time I did this, I had no idea what it was going to be.
Okay.
And there is an entrance there actually now that's being used for snowmobiles, and that will be changed over.
That may or may not be the entrance, might be the houses place there or something.
Right, but that's the area that it's, it's already something there.
Yeah, okay.
And so, I didn't know exactly what DOT would say. They've limited us to, I think, 22 feet of gravel, even though the opening width of the space is 50 feet or something like that.
But their approval is based on a location?
Yes.
Actual, yep, actual location, they measure from telephone poles and all that, so that it can be found.
And Gary references the permit number on the plan, as I recall.
I believe it.
Yes.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Can I get a motion to find the findings of fact approved?
Do we want to?
Second. All in favor? Okay. And is there an actual site plan, or?
Yeah, there needs to be a motion to approve the subdivision plan.
Right. Okay, can we have a motion to approve the subdivision plan? Yep.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, great.
And now, you need to use the magic pen again.
It might be easier when, how do we want to do this?
Yeah, that was a little-
Yeah, we can pass this one down.
Yeah, smaller.
Probably should have you, um, I don't have it.
You busy, Gary?
Mm-hmm.
You busy? Busy getting water feed?
Thank you, Gary. Thank you. I want to applaud you. Thank you very much.
You went right at night.
I'll get you back.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Good.
This is, that's my-
Okay, onward. Let's move on to our final item on the agenda, which is a request for review of applicability for use of a facility out on Route 2. So, before we begin, let me make it clear to the board that our charter here tonight is to specifically focus on whether this request, that this proposal of reuse or different use in this facility is applicable or not to the applicant having to apply for a pull-up.
There's a site plan for the site.
Right. So, the point I'm making is that we're not reviewing, you know, we're not reviewing the type of manufacturing that's going to go in there, per se. We're certainly considering what that is and determining, does that in any way make it applicable for him to come formally to the board for a request to do that? Now, having said that, do they have in their package this information here from?
No.
Okay. So-
Do you want to take one and pass it down?
Yeah, let's just pass it down. So, as we all know, nothing exists in a vacuum, especially when it comes to us determining particular types of manufacturing and what that manufacturing is, right, and what it means for the facility or the community. We need to take a look at main legislation in regards to, in regards to the definition, legal definition for manufacturing of, or production of marijuana. This is not growing, right? This is taking the product and doing something, right, which is manufactured. So, if you, if I could focus the board members to item 4E at the bottom of that page, you'll notice that the words are pretty specific. Manufacturing, or manufacturing means the production, blending, infusion, compounding of other preparation of marijuana, concentrated marijuana products, including but not limited to marijuana extraction or preparation by means of chemical synthesis. And I'd like you to focus on the two last words. That's, that's where we need to have our discussion, I believe. Sarah, could you enlighten us, when the original site plan used for that facility, even in advance of what's going on there now for his business, had a review of chemical use and others?
No. There has never been, there's never been a review for chemical use. The site has been approved, it does not have, just for the record, it does not have a DEP site location permit. It's not a large enough site. It was reviewed several times under the Bethel Site Plan Review Ordinance for wood manufacturing. The DEP involvement in the past has centered on, at one point in time, around 1988, there were two smoke stacks, for lack of a better word, that required an air emissions license from the DEP. All of that documentation is in the file. But in the Department Order approving the air emissions license, they made it clear that there were no additives, there were no paints, lacquers, varnishes, or any other coatings used in the process. It was strictly voided manufacturing. When Ben first bought the property, at his request, you reviewed his change of use to a stone manufacturing facility. At that point in time, you made a determination that was not a change of use, that it was one, a sort of raw material manufacturing to another raw material manufacturing. But when Ben came to us to talk about this proposed use, Toby and I were very unclear as to whether or not this constituted a change of use that affected the performance standard, and that's why we brought it to you.
Yeah, and to just add on that, the underlying, the underpinning of evaluating this chemical, this use, this potential use of chemical synthesis in the manufacturing process, and none of us are experts in that business, but those are the terms, is simply, does this create a situation where we need, the town needs to ensure through state fire marshal, local fire department, whatever, that, that this operation as proposed is safe, right? So, I think because of this chemical, you know, this potential use of chemical synthesization, if that's what you want to call it, that it is in fact a change in use based on what we had approved before, and that the only way we can get, the only way we can get the fire marshal, state fire marshal to review this formally is to have a site application for, for this facility, for this proposed facility, an amendment, or an amendment to this.
Yes. So, this whole thing of what constitutes a change in use, I recall recently, the site plan for what was a commercial property, previously used as a commercial property, but we, that was the rest, the proposed restaurant on Route 2. So, I always get fuzzy about what are we saying about change?
It is fuzzy.
Okay, so, I mean, but we didn't ask to make a determination at that time. We took something that was a bait and shop.
Bait tackle shop, and made it a brewery.
Right.
Yeah.
And they came, but I guess the point I'm having is they're like categories. Commercial, not, maybe the steam plant's just manufacturing because they're making something there, I don't know. I mean, either like-
There is no, the operative is a change of use that, the key, the key is, isn't a change of use that affects state performance standard?
Okay.
So, are the parking requirements different? In this case, no. No, are the setback requirements different? No. But this project has never been reviewed, but there's nothing in this folder that indicates this has ever been reviewed by the state fire marshal. It's a requirement in the site plan ordinance, section, section B, standard number 22. Does this project meet the requirements of the state fires marshal's office? We don't know, because it hasn't been reviewed by the state fire marshal, so.
But it would only go to site plan if we, I'm trying to back it up even further, Sarah. In other words, are we concluding in this discussion at some point whether this is a change in use? Is it manufacturing to manufacturing?
You're, what you're determining is, 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 do you believe, to discuss a proposed element of change of use, no binding commitment shall be made except the, except the applicability of the site plan review ordinance. So, your two options are, say, no, we don't think this is a change of use that needs to be right in the planning board, he's good to go, or you can say, yes, this affects the performance standard, and this should be, this change of use should be reviewed by the planning board.
So, you're drawing the thread of that it does affect a performance standard in that it is talking about something that is using chemicals, and absent the site plan review, there would be no state fire marshal. Therefore, it's affecting the performance standard? Is that what we're trying to understand?
Yeah, and to carry that further, I mean, you make a great point. Manufacturing against manufacturing is not delineatory enough for us, right? So, without this additional information of knowing one, and it's going to be a manufacturing capability for marijuana, and then for Ben, for us to research and go back and say, well, what does the state statute say about what that exactly is, and that it potentially could contain this chemical synthesis, that should then give us attention that it is manufacturing to manufacturing, but because it's the kind of manufacturing it is, that a performance standard is in jeopardy of not being met. And so, the only way we can get there is to, is to ensure that the applicant applies for an amendment to the current site application with the fire marshal's review of that potential use, saying to us, from a safety perspective, thumbs up, thumbs down.
But it's also multiple businesses.
Right.
Not one business.
So, that's the other point that I really want to bring up, too, with this statement, is there is multiple businesses in retail, manufacturing, storage, all different levels of industry happening there, and I want to make it aware that that is happening, that that is my intention, and I'm here as a landowner, landlord, who has businesses operating there.
Yeah.
And one of the businesses is the manufacturing of marijuana, manufacturer-
Marijuana, marijuana products.
Exactly. And so, that's where my language got tied up, because there's also manufacturing of stone, there's also storage, there's, there is a caregiver currently there right now, and-
What does that mean, sir?
A registered primary caregiver is renting space at the mill currently now.
So, these are lease, these are tenant.
And that is not talking, that's not all the same conversation. So, one is, yes, I want the facility to get approved to be a tier-one facility for the manufacturing of synthesized products in one of the buildings, and I agree, the fire marshal needs to tell whatever person or entity doing that that it needs to be safe.
When you're speaking of caregiver, you're speaking under the terms of this law.
Marijuana.
Yeah, I mean, caregiver is a very broad word.
No, no, a residence caregiver is a very defined term.
Well, I meant in English. I thought first you were talking about somebody who was living. I did not understand what you were talking about.
And it is my primary residence also. And it is my primary residence also.
Oh, okay.
So I have, because it is a mixed use, that is my registered primary residence. And there is other things happening there. So that's, I'm just trying to paint the broad picture of the site to you guys, so we're all clear.
So if we can take the specificity of this marijuana potential use and put it over here, we understand, we just talked about that. Do we now have an opportunity to?
Absolutely.
To have this application come as an amendment for multiple use?
Absolutely.
Multiple uses is where it comes from.
And so we should do that.
And why is it gonna be considered an amendment?
Because it already has an approved site plan.
Like the soils and.
That site plan dates back to when?
The most recent amendment, I believe, was in 1996. But the site, I mean, the site has been reviewed, this is 88, but I'm quite confident the last amendment was in 96. So the reason it's an amendment, Lori, is because it has an approved site plan. So changes to it are called amendments regardless of the scope.
And are you saying that if we, are we, the point he's making, are we subjecting the whole site to the site plan or just the portion of the site he's proposing this?
Just the portion of the site that he's proposing for this particular use.
And is that in a freestanding mode or is it attached? Is it shared?
All the buildings, there's like 10 different buildings.
They're all existing.
They're all existing, and they're all, they're not attached. So they're getting broken up into different.
They're not attached?
No, it's a detached facility.
Which building are you referring to?
I'm not there yet, I'm just trying to get the ball rolling for a company to come in.
Okay, so.
So the last, the last signed amendment I see was in 94, when they expanded. At that time, there were 80, hard to believe it was once that large in operation, but at that time, there were 80 employees on the site, and there was parking for over 100 people.
So I think we're at a juncture where we need to, obviously, a decision needs to be made about whether or not his request to do these kinds of things, the multiple use, and more specifically, the marijuana manufacturing, is applicable to an amendment site plan review. That's our, that's on the table. So I think the continued discussion about the approval of that amendment and what exactly are the subdivisions of the letting? And what are the, what are the things that are going on? And each of those cases will be part, should be part of that amended request or that amended application. Yes?
I agree.
Yes, yes, yes. So I guess what I'm trying to get us to is that I think, are we clear that we find this as applicable? It has to have.
Amendment.
Amendment. And we have to have it come to planning review.
And let's just restate the reasons we're saying that, for the record here.
So overarching is multi-use.
So you know, that's not, so you know, that is not required, by the way. In the determination of applicability, all that's required is that a motion be made that the site plan review is or is not applicable. You do not need to issue a finding of fact.
What we should be saying.
I'm just, I'm just.
Well, all of our discussion here is on record.
Oh, absolutely.
Right, right. So I mean, I mean, it's clear, I can summarize, I think the best I can, is that we've got really, in a general sense, we've got a multi-use situation now going on, on the original site plan that's gonna require amendment by itself. And then in addition to that, in more specificity, we've got this, this thing about marijuana production, marijuana manufacturing, the production of, from marijuana to some product, that we know from the state ordinance or laws that it requires, it could require the synthesization from some chemical process, and that needs to have the fire marshal's statement, fire marshal review. So a standard that was met with the original application is now, is now potentially no longer met. So that's why we need him to come back to us.
Well, all that other stuff has been, all the other businesses and stuff has always been happening there and always been under that original use. The main change that I'm making is I want to put the manufacturer of marijuana site there, and I want the EPA and whatnot to approve it as a tier-one or tier-two facility where they can be doing that there. So that's gonna be under the state fire marshal, that's gonna be under their jurisdictions for the site.
Yeah.
That building that gets.
Very appropriate.
And you want to stand that under site plan review, if we make that finding, that there are standards that are governed by this board regarding noise and odor, which you will have to provide, you know, clear documentation about how that standard can be met at this facility.
Well, you'll have to comply with all the standards.
I know, but I just, I wanna make sure he understands. I think you're operating under a certain, I get the sense that you're operating under a certain premise about state level stuff, but there are some standards under site plan.
Correct.
Okay.
These are, these are no different than the standards you have to comply with to get your.
Hundred percent.
Right.
And air and noise and all that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So if we're clear, then we need a motion to find his request for applicability to deny.
That site plan review ordinance is or is not applicable?
It is applicable.
Someone, well, somebody's made that motion.
I will make that motion, that's it.
Thank you. All in favor? Okay, so you know the process now, you're gonna back, you know, go create that site plan, and it'll be back for review when prepared and ready, and we'll address it as a standalone amendment?
Running a stored space on the property, I would add that in. That has a bit of a regional, anyway, I'm just saying because insurance or anything else.
All that stuff's been happening and under my insurance since we first.
He's safe, that's all I care about, so he's safe.
Yeah, correct, because I am wanting to put in more lockers and whatnot, so.
Okay, because that's not manufacturing.
It's a confusing situation.
It's a confusing situation with the site, but I'm turning it into something more, so I'm trying to keep a broad.
And what I, I guess what I would like, and I think that Ben would agree with this, one of the requirements of any site plan amendment is, in addition to the state fire marshal having to offer their opinion, the local fire chief is supposed to offer their opinion as well. And so this would give Mike Jodri an excellent opportunity. Oftentimes, he has conditions about what can be stored in storage units, or him wanting to be informed of what's in a storage unit. Again, not to be excessively onerous, but it certainly, we want our first responders to be aware of materials that are stored on site. I mean, fortunately for Ben, because this was already an industrial use, there is a dry hydrant located, if not on the property, adjacent to the property. In the past, the fire chief has found that there's sufficient water, but this would be a good opportunity for the fire chief to review all of the different uses and ascertain whether or not the first responder's needs will be met.
Can I ask one question? I mean, are we gonna be hearing this in the theoretical sense? Or in the sense of, here is the person who is expecting to operate this tier-one facility? Are you?
We can't, that's, that's at the discretion of the applicant.
Well, and that's what I'm asking the applicant.
I am, I own the property as an LLC, I rent out to different businesses, so I'm gonna be making the application for it to be able to happen.
And so you're gonna be able to maintain all the aspects of these performance standards related to.
Related to the manufacture of marijuana products, yeah, I would be.
As it applies.
But I would making the site applicable to.
As it applies to the standards you need to be complying with.
Exact, that's my goal, is to be able to get to the facility to that level, so it is, you know.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much.
Sorry for the confusion.
Oh, no worries, I appreciate it.
And just so you know, we, as a rule, we try to avoid these determinations. It would be in a perfect world, if the ordinance were, you know, black and white in all instances, you wouldn't leave this. You'd be able to say, yep, this is it, this isn't. This was a little unclear, you know, this was unclear, and when it's unclear, it's great to have a public conversation, to have it on public record.
Yeah, I wanna be able to get the site to that level, so I know they're gonna need the town to report.
I'm just still, I have to say now, unclear about, you're not going to be the medical marijuana operator.
You're, you're.
But there are standards that affect who's operating.
But he will be accountable for answering to the board our questions as it relates to the compliance of those standards.
This conversation was just about, does he need?
I get that, I'm thinking ahead to the next meeting. And I still have, I guess he, I guess what you're saying is he's gonna be binding himself to whatever representations he makes, even though if the, if the actual operator intends to do something different, they're gonna have to come back?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to understand.
When, if you'll recall, the.
It's not, it's in theory, but there could be something different when it actually happens.
The standard conditions of any site planned project in the town of Buffalo, the first project is, you know, you have two years to do this. And the second is, you're gonna do what you say you're gonna do, and if you do anything differently, you need to come talk to us.
All right.
That helps me understand.
Let's move on to other business, if you can. We have some board vacancies coming up.
We do. Three terms are expiring in December, Sherry Thursday, between Bennett and Pat McCartney. You should, I'm informing you, and you should also be receiving a letter from the town clerk. And of course, I think you guys have been fantastic, and the town hopes that you will reapply for.
I'm a good one.
Yeah.
But you are a two-year.
Yeah, you were a year.
But there are, there are different levels, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and I can just speak for.
Please come back.
Yeah, I can just speak for the chair, and then I would be highly encouraging the three of you to join us again. And that would be. And on another note, I want you to remember that, Kevin, one December, I'm leaving the state, I'll be back until April. So as you well know, I serve at the pleasure of the board members in this chair, and I'm honored to do that. And I would submit to you that I would be willing to do that for another year if you so see that during your voting in January.
And our pleasure would be that he wouldn't go.
Town amendment up here with the cheer of being able to have him here by video.